Okay, everyone, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Is it working? Would everyone please be seated? Would everyone please be seated? I would like to welcome everyone to the meeting. Please be seated. Okay, starting at arms. It's the sheriff. Please be seated. Guide them. You'd be the chef. You'd be the collie that gets them to their seats. Would everyone please take your seats so we can get started? I'm gaining control gradually. The county commissioners are hard to corral. Let's see who's better behaved, the council or the commission. Who can be seated first? Mr. Bernstrom has some instruction on use of the microphone tonight, so, Mr. Bernstrom, will you please make your comments?
Bill almost got Bill seated.
I'll give you 30 seconds. A little cuff you could put in there. It'll work. He's going to wave through the glass and I'll know it's time to start. Okay, it looks good. Thank you, John. So I'd like to welcome everyone to the joint meeting of the Grand Forks City Council and the Grand Forks County Commission. Grand Forks Air Force Base update meeting, October 1st, 2019, at 5:30 PM in the council chambers. So with that, we do welcome and roll call: Mac, Decker, Weigle, Sandy, Vian, Weber, Marshall, and then Falk, Engen, Knopf, Sheriff Ross, Pash Peach. Peach, thank you. So with that, we go on to the next item we have on our agenda is item two, base retention investment committee update. Mr. Ford.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And thanks, everyone, for being here tonight. And it's always fun to see everyone and get together. You know, just a brief update from what the base retention investment committee's been up to over the last probably 12 months, and I'll tag team this with my good friend and colleague, Mr. Phelan. But you might have noticed, we changed our name from the base realignment impact committee to the base retention investment committee. That was intentional. We were quite a ways off of BRAC. The future looks to be bright for the Grand Forks Air Force Base and the community. And so we wanted to get away from looking backwards over our shoulders, over realignment, and look towards the future and the potential we have as a community and the Grand Forks Air Force Base. So I think just a couple of things I'll touch on, and then I'll turn it over to Todd. But, you know, we had a pretty successful legislative session in the area of legislation to impact our military friends and neighbors in the community and the state. You all might have been familiar with the Military Spousal License Reciprocity Bill that Senator Scott Meyer championed, and I think he's here today as well. That one was a challenge that came right down from the Secretary of the Air Force and challenged all 50 governors in the state of North Dakota and the three communities Fargo, Grand Forks, Minot especially heard and accepted that challenge, and we're very thankful that that was taken up by the legislature and approved. This is going to be key. We're looking at strategic basing and BRAC criteria going in the future. So that was a great win for our community. And then, of course, there was the military pay income tax exemption. I think that's just one more feather in the cap for North Dakota and how much we care about our military. I talked to a previous civil engineering commander. He's gone now, but he was about two commanders ago. When he found out about this tax exemption, he emailed me saying, because he loved to hunt here in North Dakota. He was a big deer hunter, big game hunter, but he's a bow hunter. He told me he was looking at places to buy up here for when he retires now. So that's the kind of stuff we like to hear. So just a big, big thanks for the county commission, the city council, and then our legislators for supporting the BRIC's efforts on getting those two legislative items passed. They do make a big difference. The other big focus that's been coming down from the services these days, especially the Air Force, is quality of life, and not really the reciprocity and the tax exemption kind of falls right under that. But, you know, the things that communities are being challenged on now, all communities, because it's becoming very, very competitive on where new missions go, which bases are realigned, which bases may be shut down, is in the areas of schools and education, of course, and that's both K through 12 and higher ed. And so we're very happy to be partnering with the University of North Dakota and their air university associates to bachelor's degree program that they have going on. But also, the BRIC's been engaging the Grand Forks Public School System a lot more often with Dr. Brenner, and engaging more with the University of North Dakota and Melanie Linder as well. Melanie Linder just actually accepted an invitation to join the BRIC not too long ago. So we'll have two representatives from the University of North Dakota on the BRIC, and that's really to continue to communicate, you know, what the university's doing to help with quality of life for our airmen and their families. So, and then, of course, healthcare is another one that the BRIC is really interested in, and partnering with all two, and 319th Med Group, and how can we as a BRIC and a community make sure that all the best healthcare options are offered to our airmen. And what we do as a BRIC is we figure, we have a theory that, not a theory, but kind of a mantra, that if it's good for the base, it's really, it's good for the community as well. So we look at these as community partnerships and community building. So BRIC is looking at all these different things and how we can continue to make quality of life better for our airmen, and how do we strengthen that partnership with Grand Forks Air Force Base. Mr. Phelan, anything you want to add on under BRIC?
I would just say Representative Vedder's here, and he really was that champion of that, the income tax incentive. So, thank you, Representative Vedder. I think you're back there. I would say the only thing, there's, we have this federal model of government, federal, state, local, and I think the, some of the measures that were brought down by the Air Force and all the other commands in the Pentagon, really was a demonstration of top-down, really good things we should do from reciprocity to the others. And sometimes we get a little jaded by, at the federal level, but I think that's really a great example of the federal government working. And it pushed us to doing things from reciprocity to other things that we should have been doing beforehand. And so I think, I think I'm thankful for that, and that really came from the Pentagon, and that's not only served, should serve us here in Grand Forks throughout our country. So a really great example of that. And as Tom said, what's really good for the Air Force Base is good for the community as we move forward as part of that. The other thing, I think, Colonel Pringle, you're not at a lot of the meetings, but we've been working on public-private partnerships, public-public and public-private partnerships. And some of the folks are in the room today, so we've been working on solid waste and recycling partnerships. We've been working on drinking water, fire protection partnerships. And the best part of it is not the outcomes that we're pushing forward this year and next, are the two staff groups working together in such a positive construction and genuine way. It's really heartening. It's probably some of the best meetings I get to be involved with, with people in a really good-natured, positive way, coming up with positive solutions. So I wanted to let you know, and thank you and your team for working with us with that. So that's what I have, Tom, and Mayor.
Thank you. Item three is Grand Forks Air Force Base update. So we'd like to welcome Colonel Pringle to our community. And Grand Forks is the proud home of the Grand Forks Air Force Base, and we're proud of the, able to be able to serve the men and women and the mission of the base. So with that, welcome Colonel Pringle.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. It is an honor to be here. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening on some of the changes that have been taking place out at the base. For those of you that I haven't met yet, I am Cameron Pringle, the commander of the newly redesignated 319th Reconnaissance Wing. So while we are doing some new and interesting things in the organization out at the base, my intent here is to show you that we are still the same airmen that you've been working with for decades, and our ties with this community are as strong now as they have ever been. It really is an honor to speak with you tonight. I'm grateful for this opportunity. I hope to provide some perspective for this audience on behalf of the US Air Force Airmen operating the RQ-4 Global Hawk and our other missions worldwide. So first, I'll give you a quick overview of our new organization in the 319th, how we're integrating the Global Hawk into a more focused leadership structure, and chart that out for the long term. Then we'll describe our mission and tie it to the global network, which is a very important part of how the Air Force is characterizing our operations for the future. As you probably know by now, we have RQ-4 squadrons operating across the globe. Here at Grand Forks Air Force Base, the headquarters of the 319th Reconnaissance Wing has taken what used to be an airbase wing and incorporated what used to be the 69th Reconnaissance Group, now called the 319th Operations Group. That group commanded by Colonel Jeremy Fields is responsible for safe operations and maintenance of the Global Hawk fleet worldwide. While there are some aircraft and personnel currently deployed to a unit in the Middle East, which does not fall under our organization, Colonel Fields and his team maintain close ties with all those current operations and maintenance issues across the fleet. So in addition to the 319th Operations Group, Grand Forks Air Force Base still hosts our mission support group headed by Colonel Heather Cook, as you know, which includes everything needed to sustain the base, as well as our medical group commanded by Colonel John Compton, which keeps our airmen and their families healthy and fit to fight. Our largest operational squadron, so beneath those groups, we have squadrons, the operational ones that are distributed, largest of which is the 12th Reconnaissance Squadron at Beale Air Force Base in California. It's home to the Block 30 version of the Global Hawk. And in addition to a maintenance unit there that's aligned with our aircraft maintenance squadron here at Grand Forks, we also have a training unit there. We call it Detachment Two, which trains new Global Hawk operators in the intricacies of employing this unique aircraft. Detachment One, I know these are a lot of names of a bunch of different units, but the idea is to show that we've got a lot of units spread across the globe. Detachment One of the 319th Operations Group is aligned with the Pacific Air Forces and assigned to Anderson Air Force Base in Guam in the Southern Pacific. Our team normally operates from that location in the Western Pacific Theater, but has recently deployed to Yakota Air Base in Japan in order to exploit some seasonal weather patterns that have traditionally favored our location further north. We expect them to redeploy back to Guam, given that it's the end of the summer season there. So that was the Pacific Theater. In the Mediterranean Sea, the US Navy's strategic hub, Naval Air Station Ciganella, also hosts the 7th Reconnaissance Squadron, the Titans, who fly in support of US European Command and/or US Africa Command, and occasionally US Central Command is tasked through the Air Operations Center at Ramstein. So as you can tell, one-fourth of the airmen in the 319th Reconnaissance Wing and over 75% of our aircraft are stationed somewhere other than Grand Forks. We have a worldwide focus and amazing airmen deploying across the globe, but despite our new organization, the average airmen is still aligned with the same squadron and doing the same job they have always done out at your base, and it's an honor to represent them here. So when we describe what our airmen do in the 319th, we speak in terms of mission and priorities. They're helpful terms in the Air Force that airmen are familiar with, but for our purposes today, I'm really just trying to paint a broader picture of who we are and what we're doing. When I speak to the airmen, I say that our mission is to fly, fight, and win in airspace and cyberspace. They're pretty familiar with that, because it's closely aligned with the mission of the United States Air Force. In the RPA community, the remotely piloted aircraft like the Global Hawk, we are doing every aspect of that mission every single day. In the RPA business, the pilot in the cockpit commands the aircraft to move, but that command has to travel from the cockpit across communication lines to a satellite dish, which then passes the signal through space, bounces off a satellite, in order to get to the airplane and have the desired effect. We all understand the concept of flying a Global Hawk near adversary territory to look, listen, and transmit signals and images in various forms. This is the essence of power projection in the Air Force, but our fight is all about creating problems for our nation's adversaries. And the recent example where a Navy Global Hawk was downed by a regional adversary in the Middle East shows that the presence of Global Hawk can be extremely irritating to our adversaries. I tell the airmen that that's exactly the way we like it. That's why we're there. So the 319th Reconnaissance Wing isn't just fighting in the air domain. In order to project that power, we also have to defend the base on the home front in creative ways. As General Goldfinn frequently says, our chief of staff of the Air Force, "The homeland is no longer a sanctuary, and whether an enemy wants to shoot at us in theater or launch cyber weapons against our bases in the US, we stand ready to fight the base," which means we are ready to defend our networks, our infrastructure, and our ability to win the battle wherever our enemy brings it. We recently conducted an exercise at the base to test our defenses, and I assure you that we're ready for anything except maybe a North Dakota winter. All right, we're ready for that, too, although I don't really pretend to know what that means, because I haven't seen it yet, and I hear it's pretty intense. So we're looking forward to that. We're well-prepared and well-prepared for a host of threats. Our highest priority in the 319th Reconnaissance Wing is mission-ready squadrons. This includes everything we need to arm squadrons to conduct missions from mission-ready airmen to mission-ready weapon systems and mission-ready families. We're focused on readiness and working to get after the things they need to be even more ready tomorrow than we are today. One of the most important partnerships we have in this community is between the medical providers. As we undergo changes in our military healthcare system directed by Congress, we need to be in lockstep with our partners downtown and appreciate the help of the BRIC and MAC committees that have helped us communicate more effectively. No matter what potential mission we want to consider for future basing at Grand Forks Air Force Base, world-class healthcare is a critical contributor to that quality of life. Our second priority in the wing is developing leaders. In addition to some of the world-class training opportunities, we're sending airmen across the country. We're grateful for the opportunities to partner with our community here and have benefited from great courses at local schools and shared opportunities with local leaders from retired military professionals to the titans of local industry who are willing to share their wisdom with us. Our third priority as a wing is to build the Global Hawk community for the future. Clearly, this underpins our other priorities, but we wanted to give special recognition to the long-term benefits of our strategic partnership with the people of this town, which we affectionately call our Global Hawk community. The partnerships we've built here, including University of North Dakota and other local schools, the private partners who've created Grand Sky and others, will make all of us stronger over the course of many years to come. Grand Forks, North Dakota is clearly and truly an exceptional community, and the support we receive here truly enables our global mission. Our Global Hawk community also includes partners who share our airspace and our runway, the public-private relationships we've built with Grand Sky and our Customs and Border Patrol partners are also served to make us stronger. We each derive advantages from each other, whether it be feeding our aerial surveillance radar to enable beyond-line-of-sight travel, or the upcoming exercise which will test our ability to control multiple airframes in the same airspace simultaneously. These partnerships are a critical element of our future strategy. However, building the Global Hawk community for the future also requires a thoughtful approach to how we think about the Global Hawk will evolve over the coming years. As leaders in Global Hawk community, we owe a thoughtful approach to strategic planning in the same way we owe the Global Hawk operators thoughtful guidance to help them do their jobs. For that reason, we're developing the Global Hawk strategic plan, which will include broad principles by which we can align our efforts, as well as specific examples of where we're heading as a Global Hawk community within the Air Force. The broad theme of this strategic plan, as well as the theme I used to communicate it to the airmen, is the concept of a network. We like to think of the Global Hawk as a node in a broader communications network which connects us to the American instruments of power across the globe. While much of the strategic plan will involve priorities for modernization of the weapon system, the overriding principle is a commitment to support the broader network within which we operate. The unique attributes of remotely piloted aircraft, especially those with increased levels of autonomy such as the Global Hawk, are particularly suited to an era of great power competition like the one we are entering today. As our adversaries continue to develop technologies that challenge our dominance of space and cyber domains, increasingly autonomous aircraft will proliferate across the airspace of the future. As Global Hawk operators, we are very comfortable with leading-edge concepts, such as teaching and learning from intelligent machines. Our aircrew are constantly translating the logic of the aircraft into terms that are understandable to an air traffic deconfliction system that was built around human interactions. As we continue to connect smarter and smarter aircraft to our networks, the ability of the operator to translate what the aircraft is doing to other humans will also become increasingly important. In short, it's an exciting time to be in the Global Hawk community. For the first time in its history, the US Air Force has organized its Global Hawk operations under a wing that is solely dedicated to the development of this weapon system and its personnel. And yet, our focus remains fixed on the broader network through which we integrate with other capabilities, including this strategic relationship with our community. And that is what empowers us to fly, fight, and win. Thank you, and I appreciate, again, this opportunity.
Thank you, Colonel Pringle, for that update. It certainly shows that our Global Hawk mission is global, and we appreciate the ability to serve you. With that, we go to item four, community base enhancement activities. General Roux?
Actually, I'm going to lead it off, Mayor. And just thank everybody once again. This is, I think, the third year in a row we've come back this time of year, just to kind of give you an update on our activities. And as I was just listening to Colonel Pringle, you know, I was the wing commander out there 20 years ago, and they make them a lot smarter now than they ever have. Because I'm not close to that level in the delivery that he just made to us. But General Roux and myself and George Schlossberg have been doing a lot of good work with the body of the BRIC and others, and we thank these two bodies, the council and the commission, certainly, for all the support that they've provided to the airmen and the base and the mission that we're trying to help with as well, over the course of the last year and long before that as well. So thank you. You guys are well-regarded inside the Air Force as one of the communities at the very top of the list of folks that take care of their airmen and know and understand how important that is to have that kind of a relationship from the community standpoint with the base and the folks that are getting the mission done out there. So my eternal thanks to you for all you're doing. The way I thought we'd do this this year is just to kind of, number one, give you a rundown of some of the interactions that we've had through the course of the last year. The big things that have happened, I think most of you are aware of that, and Colonel Pringle just talked about it, the wing redesignation is a real big thing. That's very important, and that's all part of what I see as the arrows trending up like they never have been for a long time at the Grand Forks Air Force Base in terms of the value to our national security and the status that we hold within the Air Force in terms of mission. So that's a very big thing. I think that's reflected also in the level of VIP visits that the wing has seen, which has been certainly an uptick over the course of the last two or three years. The Global Hawk mission, you said it best, but the base is now known as the Global Hawk base for the Air Force, period, dot. That's it. And that's a good thing. So those are some of the big rocks. We'll talk about some of the other underlying stuff here in just a minute, that through our interactions we've been able to pick up. But I would also say that Bill and I are really happy to be part of this effort. And we go to a lot of the trade shows, Air Force Association, Air Lift Tank Association, and the like. And we're very proud of the fact now that, basically, when we see our peers and others and some of those folks that work for us that are now general officers, they refer to us as the Grand Forks guys. So we're happy and proud to be called the Grand Forks guys. But we'll start it off. Bill's going to give you a little bit of rundown about our visit to Air Combat Command, 25th Air Force and 19th Air Force, back in November of last year, right after we were here, before these bodies.
So we went on a few trips this year, and when we go on these trips, it's always led, generally led by the mayor and the team, Tom Ford and Billy and others. And we usually have a very common theme, depending on the awareness level of the audience that we're going to talk with. In November of last year, we went to Air Combat Command. We had visited them a few years earlier, but at that time, we were under the, the base was under Air Mobility Command. So while they were polite and courteous a few years earlier, they weren't as interested as they were in November of 18, when the base had shifted from Air Mobility Command to Air Combat Command at Langley Air Force Base of Virginia, where I spent my last assignment and a good portion of my Air Force career under Air Combat Command. So our message when we go to these different headquarters, it almost always starts with what Rusty ended with, which is the community support that you all give for the airmen and their families. Between General Finley and myself, I think we've commanded, we had been in a position similar to Colonel Pringle's about six times during our career. So the people that we engage with know that we have some credibility, having been a base or wing commander before. And we can both say with great honesty, him with personal experience, that the support that this community gives the airmen and the families has been and is even getting greater with the initiatives that have been, come about just this past year, above and beyond almost every other community that's out there in the Air Force. So that's almost always our lead story. It's a good story, and it was one of the ones we mentioned to the headquarters at Air Combat Command. So this trip that we went on was to first to Langley, to ACC, use that acronym, and at that base, at that headquarters, we visited the operations folks and what we call the A3, the folks that do the plans and requirements and money people, always important to visit, the intelligence part of the staff, and the installation part, the 47, that worries about the logistics for the mission that's done here, but also base defense and civil engineering and things like that. So we got the whole gamut of the staff, in addition to visiting with General Holmes, the commander of Air Combat Command. And in addition to discussing the community support, we had some specific items, some of those directors, the generals that were in charge of those parts of the staff. to us as the Grand Forks guys. So, we're happy and proud to be called the Grand Forks guys. But we'll start it off. Bill's going to give you a little bit of rundown about our visit to Air Combat Command, 25th Air Force and 19th Air Force, back in November of last year, right after we were here, before these bodies.
So, we went on a few trips this year, and when we go on these trips, it's always generally led by the mayor and the team, Tom Ford and Billy and others. And we usually have a very common theme, depending on the awareness level of the audience that we're going to talk with. In November of last year, we went to Air Combat Command. We had visited them a few years earlier, but at that time, we were under the, the base was under Air Mobility Command. So, while they were polite and courteous a few years earlier, they weren't as interested as they were in November of 18, when the base had shifted from Air Mobility Command to Air Combat Command at Langley Air Force Base of Virginia, where I spent my last assignment and a good portion of my Air Force career under Air Combat Command. So, our message when we go to these different headquarters, it almost always starts with what Rusty ended with, which is the community support that you all give for the airmen and their families. Between General Finley and myself, I think we've commanded, we had been in a position similar to Colonel Pringle's about six times during our career. So, the people that we engage with know that we have some credibility, having been a base or wing commander before, and we can both say with great honesty, him with personal experience, that the support that this community gives the airmen and the families has been and is even getting greater with the initiatives that have come about just this past year above and beyond almost every other community that's out there in the Air Force. So, that's almost always our lead story. It's a good story, and it was one of the ones we mentioned to the headquarters at Air Combat Command. So, this trip that we went on was to first to Langley, to ACC, use that acronym, and at that base, at that headquarters, we visited the operations folks in what we call the A3, the folks that do the plans and requirements and money people, always important to visit, the intelligence part of the staff, and the installation part, the 47, that worries about the logistics for the mission that's done here, but also base defense and civil engineering and things like that. So, we got the whole gamut of the staff, in addition to visiting with General Holmes, the commander of Air Combat Command. And in addition to discussing the community support, we had some specific items. Some of those directors, the generals that were in charge of those parts of the staff were fairly new in the job. Many of them at Air Combat Command, I'd say the majority, had not ever been to Grand Forks. So, with our experience and our background and our observations, we kind of brought them up to speed from a, you know, probably a minimal level of understanding to an awareness level on some things that have been going on here. The UAS Center of Excellence, that's what General Finley and I call this place here, between the university, the test site, what's going on at the 319th Reconnaissance Wing, all the commercial and other activities, the UAS summits that happen here, the understanding that up here in the Northern Plains, you have a unmanned aircraft Center of Excellence for the nation. We talked about that extensively with the folks at Air Combat Command and let them know what that meant to them and for their mission set. The Enhanced Use Lease, that's the arrangement between the county and the Department of the Air Force that we call, you know, run by the corporation called Grand Sky, and has the companies of currently Northrop Grumman and General Atomics, where there was some awareness of that a year and a half ago at Air Combat Command, it was at the lower levels. And specifically, what that Enhanced Use Lease means to ACC's mission, we brought those leaders up to speed on that. And lastly, the infrastructure that is on this base, that is in amazing, not only amazing condition, but amazing capacity, from previous commanders and from investments, smart investments that are made over time. Because of the staff's unfamiliarity with the base, we gave some examples of what was the potential here, not just for the decision at that point had not been made or announced that the Reconnaissance Wing was going to be established here. So, we highlighted that point, but also it gives some other capabilities for some other future mission sets that we wanted to make sure that the folks at Langley knew about. So, we did that fairly briefly. We finished up the day at Langley with a briefing from the 480th DCGS, the Distributed Common Ground System, a part of a federated architecture that's around the world at multiple sites, that takes all this information that the Global Hawk and other ISR platforms suck in, all different types of information, and figures out, you know, what's important, what's not, and then distributes that out to the warfighters that need that. From a Global Hawk perspective, it was interesting and very educational for the community leaders, I think, to see these planes that fly around, these so graceful, big, large unmanned airplanes that stay airborne for a day and a half or so, you know, where does that stuff go? Where does that information go? And we were given some really good examples of how that DCGS takes that information and distributes it to where it needs to go. So, we finished up at Langley. We then went down to Texas to the headquarters for 25th Air Force, which is a numbered Air Force at the time for the intelligence surveillance and reconnaissance efforts of the Air Force under which the Global Hawk fell. That 25th Air Force and then its kind of sister 24th Air Force, CYBER, has just recently been merged together, so those don't exist anymore, and they're now called 16th Air Force. There's no math there, please trust me.
Don't try and figure it out.
It's all just heritage. The Air Force tends to, you know, put a premium on heritage, and 16th Air Force was picked as the number that they're going to use. But regardless, when we went on our visit to Major General Mary O'Brien, who was the commander of that Air Force at the time, we gave the same basic message to her staff with some specifics on some ISR. They were very knowledgeable in Global Hawk. They were not as knowledgeable in some of the things that are going on with the community and the support of the airmen and the families, the same message that we beat home at Langley. Finally, a small group of us kind of split off, and we went over to 19th Air Force, which is another, at another base, which is the organization in charge of pilot training. As you may have heard, the Air Force is challenged with some pilot training shortages over the last several years, and we had got into a discussion with the deputy commander of 19th Air Force on how the Grand Forks, either the base, Grand Sky, University of North Dakota, or some combination thereof, might there be some play for this community to help in the Air Force's pilot shortage, whether it be manned or unmanned. That generated a discussion and a tasking to write a concept paper that we've been working on for the last several months, and we've had it reviewed by General Pringle, I'm sorry, I'm already promoting you there, Cameron, by Colonel Pringle.
Blurb boy.
To put forth, for the leadership of 19th Air Force to consider that as a possibility, and there'll be more discussion on that in the future. So, that was our visit in November of 18. We are planning a follow-up visit to Air Combat Command Headquarters in the first week of December, back to Langley. This time, the players are pretty much the same, so we're going to get into some new topics, new things that have developed here in the last year that I think, from my experience, would be very, that staff members at Air Combat Command will be very interested in some of these recent developments, and we're going to be hitting those topics when we go back in December.
The next trip that we did was a Pentagon visit, which we try to do at least once annually, and that was done in February 19. On that particular visit, we saw a wide array of folks. We stopped in to see Major General Steve Basham, who's now Lieutenant General Steve Basham. At the time, he was the Legislative Liaison, the head of Air Force Legislative Liaison. We just wanted to give him a general awareness of what's going on. He's been, he was the vice commander over at Minot, so he was somewhat familiar with Grand Forks, but we wanted to talk to him about the new Grand Forks with the Global Hawk mission, which he was less familiar with, because I think it was a tanker base when he was over there at Minot. Well-received by him and a general awareness thing that, you know, I think is always good to get all the senior leaders you can aware of what's going on up here with the Warriors of the North. And we accomplished our purpose there. The next day, we saw him late in the evening, right after we flew in. The next day, we saw Lieutenant Gerald Warren Berry and Mr. John Henderson, who are, Warren Berry is the A4 on the air staff, which is logistics, and John Henderson is the SAFIE, which is installations and environment. They worry about installations. That's in their job jar. Very successful talking to them as well. Henderson, very interested in what's going on up here. They also do the basing decisions, so when there's a basing decision, they're the ones who sort through them, and their staff sort through those particular decision criteria. We emphasized, as we'd emphasized before with this particular folks, that in their criteria, they do need to consider strategic location. Grand Forks Air Force Base gives strategic flexibility to the nation for the national defense, especially in the emerging environments, threat environments that we've got now. That is not part of their criteria now. It's more of a kind of an analog thing, runway length, this, that, and other things. Strategic location needs to be considered. They guaranteed us that that is in their decision matrix now, and they have every time we've talked to them about it, but we will not quit emphasizing that message to them, should there be some basing decisions that come down the pike that would impact our base out here. We also met with a Senate Armed Services Committee staffer that General Roux flew with way back when. He's now working on the Senate Armed Services Committee as a general staffer. And again, that was more of an awareness-type opportunity. Never hurts to have somebody over in the Hill know more about Grand Forks Air Force Base and what the capability and the possibilities are and the potential. Finally, we had a session with Mr. Bob McMahon, who was the Assistant Secretary of Defense for Installations, George, help me.
Sustainment.
Sustainment, yeah. Installations to sustainment, long title. But basically, that means he's in charge of installations too. He's the one worrying installations. Retired Air Force two-star general, who both of us knew and worked with when we were on active duty as well. Again, he was somewhat familiar with Grand Forks because he was the Air Mobility Command A4, and Grand Forks was in Air Mobility Command at the time that he was up there. But we updated him on all things that were going on, talked about the Center of Excellence that Grand Forks has become for the unmanned arena with respect to having the test site here, having the university so much a leader in the nation in that, and having the base and Grand Sky out there doing what they do. Again, very interested in what we were doing. We usually go back for the Air National Guard reception in May, and we did that in Washington, and we tied some meetings to that as well. A meeting we had there, I think, is particularly interesting, was with Brigadier General Cliffy Cluff.
Jim.
Yeah, his call sign's Cliffy. You figure that one out. I think it might be Cheers, but I'm not sure. Great guy, and he brought his whole staff in, and we actually had lunch in the general officer dining area in the Pentagon. He brought his whole staff in. We had a lengthy discussion about a variety of things. One thing that we pulled away from there, he's in kind of, was in a unique position then. He's since moved over to the Joint Staff, but he's still working ISR kind of things. He was the big-wing ISR guru. He ran everything big-wing ISR. So, he had RC-135s as well as Global Hawk and the like under his purview. And they, him and his folks were really interested in an array of things, but among them was the airspace initiatives that we're pursuing out here to try and open up the airspace. He knew about Grand Sky. We filled him in a little bit more. Some of his staff did not know about it. He was tangentially aware of the great infrastructure that we had, but we made sure he knew and understood even better that the infrastructure out here is top shelf. And we had the strategic location discussion with him as well as we do with everybody to make sure they know and understand how important that Grand Forks is to the strategic flexibility that our nation maintains. And the one thing that I definitely wanted to bring up was his interest and his staff's interest in this potential for some pilot training relief that could be provided by Grand Forks, Grand Sky, and the university combination out here, i.e. the concept paper that we've drafted that we're going to circulate to try and draw some interest in that respect. Arctic Strategy was something that we talked with him too, but prior to that, we'd met with Ms. Iris Ferguson on this particular trip, and she has been the one on the air staff who's been writing the Air Force portion of the National Arctic Strategy. It's the second or third time we've met with her. Bill's talked to her on the phone, I don't know how many times. She's a key and essential piece to the emerging Arctic Strategy. I think the one thing that we try to tell everybody with respect to that, and you'll hear that again when we talk about our NORTHCOM trip, was that as the nation looks at the Arctic Strategy, the one thing they can't forget is that it is much more economical, much more practical, and a lot smarter to use existing infrastructure where they need to. Grand Forks Air Force Base has a strategic capacity to be a part of that Arctic Strategy and should be a part of that Arctic Strategy based on a strategic location and the infrastructure, the existing infrastructure that's out there. We made that point clear to Iris, and Bill will talk about our NORTHCOM visit in just a minute. We also discussed airspace issues with the airspace guru of the Air Force, a guy named Ed Chupin. He is very much encouraged to help us figure out a way to open up the airspace even more than it's already opened up here for unmanned operations. Ed realizes the problems that are inherent at Edwards Air Force Base, China Lake, and other Nellis Range and the like, on getting onto the ranges, how saturated they are, and understands the capability that could be provided up here to bring some relief to those places. So, and the final thing I'll mention is we talked to General Kelly, the A3 Lieutenant General Kelly. His knowledge of Grand Forks was extremely minimal, and we filled him in. He's a fighter guy that hadn't been here, knew very little about it, and we filled him in. We did see Bob McMahon again, and this time, we got some takeaways from Bob McMahon that we've taken off on. He suggested, because of all the good work that the state and you folks have done with respect to quality of life and other things, that Grand Forks does a video because it is an example that others need to follow. Keith Lund took that on at the EDC, and that video, I was just told 10 minutes before this meeting, the third draft is done. It's under five minutes. We've been whittling it down a little bit from time to time because it was a little bit too long to begin with. There was a lot of good stuff to talk about. You're the star. But that's going to be a good thing. And that was a suggestion that came out of this meeting that Bob McMahon did. He also suggested that we write a letter to the Air Force leadership and tell them about all the military-friendly things that have happened in the state. That's been done. So, a lot of good things came out of that trip as well. I'll turn it over to Bill to talk about NORTHCOM.
So, not to insult anybody's intelligence, but I didn't really understand this when I was a young officer, but services like the Army, Air Force, Navy, Marine Corps, they don't, they don't fight wars, okay? Headquarters, General Goldfein is not the commander of any combatant command. He's the commander, he's the chief of staff of the Air Force, but the services don't fight the wars. The major commands of the Air Force, like Air Combat Command, the one at Langley I was talking about, that 319th falls under, Air Combat Command does not fight wars. They provide forces. They organize, train, and equip those forces for combatant commanders that are around the world. The forces that Colonel Pringle has over in Europe, they fall underneath European Command, you know, commanded, you know, and if war happens over there, those forces and other services forces will fight under the European Command. Same in the Pacific for Pacific Command, going on in Southwest Asia under Central Command. For this Arctic interest, let me put it that way, that's gained every year for the last probably four, five, six years, from the President, Congress, the National Defense Authorization Act have directed the service and DOD to formalize and come up with a more robust strategy on how our nation will respond to our interests in the Arctic. As General Finley said, our, you know, our pitch has been to, yes, Arctic is a, offers a lot of challenges operating up there. It certainly offers a lot of challenges building new infrastructure up there, but while you're looking at missions that might be done for, or in the Arctic, whether that's domain awareness, power projection, defense, offense, whatever those missions might be, include in the strategy those existing northern-tier bases like Grand Forks that has excellent infrastructure and excellent strategic capacity to provide the nation flexibility for an uncertain future. So, the command, the combatant command that's most interested in that is the combination of NORTHCOM and NORAD. NORAD, North American Air Defense Command, the American-Canadian kind of partnership that looks for air defense. But Northern Command is the U.S. Combatant Command that was stood up after 9/11, looking specifically at the North American continent and all the things associated with that. Up until recently, Northern Command was principally centered around not just the defense of the North America, but a lot of activity with disaster response and working with the Department of Homeland Security and other more domestic things. The new commander of Northern Command, as of about a year ago, General Shaughnessy, has been a friend of mine since the early 1990s. We worked together on many, many different assignments over the years. But I met him in the early spring of this year, and I was talking to him because I was going, he asked me, okay, so what's going on at Grand Forks? And what does that mean to me, him as the Northern Command Commander? And I told him at an Air Force Association function down in Orlando, I was about, just said, hey, this is why Grand Forks is important to you, NORTHCOM commander. And he was very interested. He said, you got to come by my staff and talk to my staff about that. So, we did that. We had some issues on the dates to get it all coordinated, but we did that.
Last week.
Last week, yeah, sorry. I've been on the road for a few weeks. So, yeah, we did that last week and met with the key leadership of the staff there in Colorado Springs at Peterson Air Force Base in Northern Command. The leader of that team was a Brigadier General Fessler, who is the Deputy Director of Operations for for the NORAD part. The NORAD/NorthCom, they, they are, a large percentage of that staff is civilian, permanent party civilian folks, but also the staffs overlap between the responsibilities of NorthCom and NORAD. And, and I met with, we met with this general and then I met subsequent to our meeting with another Brigadier General Goodwin, who's on the NorthCom side. And we gave, we gave a pitch that we, I thought would be of interest to the Northern Command staff and it went very well for several hours last week in the morning. And, you know, a combatant command is, cares about different things than the services do. They care about executing their mission. General Shaughnessy has, has tried very hard to shift the focus of the combatant command called Northern Command onto the ability to do warfighting and to be able to do, to be able to, if there are threats from anywhere to this country, you know, that, for us to not think of North America as a, as a safe sovereign place, but, and take that for granted, is to be ready to defend and be able to do anything that might be, the nation might ask us to do. So, we went through, I got a briefing, I'm just going to show you, I'm not going to give you the briefing, I'm just going to flip through the slides pretty quickly, so there's not going to be death by PowerPoint, but just to give you an example of some of the things we do, we're on the road, because we try to tailor this to NorthCom. Could we flip over to that, that brief?
There is.
Okay, so-
Will you dim the lights, John?
So, this theme that Rusty mentioned earlier about Grand Forks offering strategic flexibility for the nation is, is a theme that we've been pounding home with every person, every senior leader in the Department of Defense, in the Air Force, in the Navy, everybody that listens to us, that this is a, a theme that we've been hitting on for the last four and a half years, the strategic flexibility for the nation. Because when you think back to the summer of 1990, did we, did anyone here think about how invested we would be in Southwest Asia, you know, in 10 or 20 or 30 years in the future? We had no idea. That was a very uncertain future and look at where we've gone. So we don't, we don't know, but the fact that you've got an amazing, a base here with amazing infrastructure gives you, have not only the capacity, but that capacity gives you flexibility for the nation. I grew up, these are dots, are Air Force bases that used to exist, the red dots, oh, sorry, I can do this. Thank you. So, I grew up on a lot, my wife and I grew up on SAC bases on most of those dots that are in the red in the north. Not this, this particular one. My dad had an assignment here that got canceled, went to get sent to Dow Air Force Base in Bangor, Maine, which is now closed. All those red dots are bases we used to have that were put in principally for the Cold War, for, against the Soviet Union, that don't exist anymore. Grand Forks, the one we circled, the blue dots along the northern part of our continental United States is one of the few remaining active duty northern tier bases and it has amazing capacity. And it's, it's kind of important to let people know kind of where this base is and just, and why it existed in the past.
What you'll notice on that chart too, was that of all the bases that were on the northern tier during the Cold War, Grand Forks is now, active duty wise, the easternmost base that still remains open.
Yep. And there, where are there, there are guard units and other reserve units at civilian fields along the northern part of the United States towards the east. As you know, you know, a civilian airport's main mission is not, you know, running bombers or tankers or Global Hawks, you know, through themselves. I just wanted to let people know where Grand Forks was. I spent some time, and you all know it, you lived it, but I spent some time going back, starting in 1957 when the base started with fighter interceptors, the various missions you had here and why those missions were put here at this base, you know, for the Cold War days, whether it be bombers or, you know, the space, or the PAR, the radars, I forgot what that acronym stands for, that radar that looked for, you know, incoming ICBMs, the nuclear tipped anti ballistic missiles that were here for a while? I didn't know that. Yeah, that was pretty important. The bombers that you've had for power projection, all of these missions were here at this base for, because of this geographic location. Soviet Union went away in the early 1990s, but now the potential threat from peer competitors is, is back. And we have the 319th, great picture there. And all the things that the, at the Global Hawk can do. We talked a lot about airspace, Rusty's mentioned it, and I'm not going to get into details, but the fact that you have unencumbered airspace or relatively unencumbered airspace unless you enter the traffic pattern at the UND's aerospace school, which is quite congested. But once you get away from that, there's a lot of airspace opportunities here for both commercial and government entities to do UAS work and we're doing a lot of discussion with that at the air staff. All these bullets, we spent a lot of time on, but each one of them you guys are familiar with, but we went through each one with the staff at NorthCom NORAD and what it meant to them. They were not familiar with Grand Sky. There's E enhanced use leases around the, the Air Force and we just let them know, particularly some of the things that are going on out there that might be of interest to them. And they were, they were very interested in some of the, you know, not just UAS opportunities, but also the counter UAS opportunities since the UAS or the unmanned vehicle threat is a kind of a, a rising concern. NASA, I wanted to just let them know, Global Hawks, NASA was going to do a mission with Global Hawk from this base here. This is one they had planned previously a couple of years ago. They ended up not executing it, but it does give you an idea of this wonderful airplane's ability to, if you wanted to have more awareness on the Arctic domain, could you do it with a Global Hawk? And you certainly could. Grand Forks is at the bottom and those rings there, consecutive rings are both hours on station and the range, subsequent range away, you know, 3,000 miles away, you know, staying on station for 10 hours is pretty impressive for an aircraft. So we want to make sure they're aware of that. We spent a good bit of time going over the, this infrastructure and facilities that are here on the base, the capacity, you know, some of the specifics on ramp space and hangar space and things like that. And, and we referred them to Colonel Pringle's staff, you know, if they had any follow-up questions, you know, this, these were, these were pretty just general points of interest. And we showed them some pictures. And then, like all the briefings, we tended to, we wanted to focus this on NorthCom's mission, those kinds of things that I mentioned, the Arctic domain awareness or if they have, there's communication challenges the further north you get. There's things that the Global Hawk may or may not be able to help in that area, air defense, power projection. Their big interest was the, the fact that this, your base, you know, has a lot of concrete, has a lot of ramp space, it's in good shape, it has hangars, it has an infrastructure that's in very, very good shape. And if the worldwide situation were to change where Northern Command would need to do some operations here greater than what's currently existing, the 319th, that the ability for this base to have the capacity to support that, the NorthCom NORAD staff was very interested in learning more about that. The general that we were briefing, General Fessler, will be up here for a visit here in the next month, to visit not only Cavalier, but also to Grand Forks. They were very interested in any opportunities at, at counter UAV that might be done here, either here in the local area at Grand Forks Air Force Base or out at the Camp Crafton, Devil's Lake area to the west. And this last bullet, which would normally be our first bullet, which I said, that was our first bullet at ACC, because they're combatant command, they care about, you know, the military members and families here, but that's not their principal concern. What they care about is if, if a mission that Northern Command wanted to do, if that mission were to come to this base and the fact that the community would support it hands down, without doubt, was a nice note to, footnote to end on. So that's just an example. The line at the bottom is one that Bill Lee always uses on every time, and I think it's a, I think it's a great line, but it also, I think it speaks to your community and, and the attitude that we leave people with. And that attitude is, this community does not come to the air staff, to Langley, back to Scott, you know, with their hands out and whining about, you know, we need this and that. This community comes with solutions, not problems. And that is known by everybody and respected by everybody and appreciated, and that's why we get invited back.
Thank you. George, do you have anything to add?
I, I did, and I, I just want to emphasize some things in a, in a summary fashion. We've spoken a lot about the infrastructure here. This is really a sea change from where I think we were as a community several years ago. When, when the tankers left with the excess infrastructure, it was considered a liability to some degree because there's a cost to maintain infrastructure that is not being used. In the last three or four years, I believe that has changed dramatically in the Defense Department, in, from, just from a budgetary environment. The military construction budget of the previous year's $10 billion a year to build things on DOD installations is gone. There really is no, there is not much military construction money available any longer. The Department of Defense budget has been recast as for new weapon systems. The Air Force money is going to the new tanker, the KC-46, the F-35. Those weapon systems need to be placed, built, and, and fielded. What that means is that the strategic location of Grand Forks and the infrastructure that it has is suddenly now viewed as an asset. When we spoke to General Fessler, he, he said that when, at the end of, at the end of our brief to him, talking about what's here at Grand Forks, he said, I need to look north and I need cement and fuel. Well, what do we have here? This community was very, very strong in 2010 when the tankers went away and working with our congressional delegation at the time to invest funds, fight for Air Force funds to mothball the fuel hydrant system. So the Air Force spent a lot of money then, you know, pumping in inert gases, pressurizing the system. I don't know where the pumps are, supposedly they were pulled and stored, well, perhaps we'll find out. I remember that at the time. But that infrastructure's now an asset for us. And I think that what, what we've been able, you know, and what General Finley and General Ru have been able to do is take that previously a liability and make that aware to some people who may not have remembered that in the department. So I think that that is a sea change that we are fortunate. Thank you.
Well, thank you. So I want to thank everyone for taking time out of their busy schedules to be here this evening. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank our congressional delegation for their strategic engagement and actions on behalf of the Grand Forks community and the Grand Forks Air Force Base, Senator Hovind, Senator Kramer, and Representative Armstrong. I also want to thank General Ru, Finley, and George for the expertise that you bring on our Team Grand Forks trips. And I think these trips to Washington DC, the Pentagon, and other Air Force installations are important so that we do update information to the key decision makers and continue to demonstrate our community's support for the airmen and the mission of the Grand Forks Air Force Base and the United States Air Force. So with that, we'll go to the next item, which is general discussion, item five. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Mayor, I've got just a general comment.
Council President Sandy.
I, I really appreciate the collaborative nature of what, what we've been doing as a group in our community. The fact that you guys come to Grand Forks, you schedule meetings and you go out and visit with people, you, I know you're visiting UND tomorrow, you've been at Grand Sky, you take the time to come and meet with the BRIC and with the City Council and the County Commissions. I think that's the, one of the strongest things that we have going for us is that the people that are going and meeting with the Air Force and meeting with the, all of the, the military branches, talking about the assets we have, you, you're coming at it from firsthand knowledge because you've actually been visiting with people and I really appreciate that. And I think that's one of the keys that continues to position our community so well is we're all welcome to speak freely and talk about the assets that we have and maybe some of the challenges that we have and, and work through that as a community to try to make sure that we position ourselves well to have the base of the future. So thanks for coming again and I really look forward to having more visits like this in the future.
Any further discussion?
Just briefly, Mayor.
Please.
Yeah, I, I also, I would like to thank Generals Finley and Ru and George Slossberg for being here. And I have had the opportunity to watch them in action over the years and they, they really provide unfettered access for this community to military hierarchy all over the country. And without them, doors wouldn't be open that are open to us right now. It's, it's amazing. And I, I watch how they're warmly greeted by high level officials in the Air Force and in the government and you know that they're on your side and that's Team Grand Forks. So, I appreciate that a lot. And then I also, on the county's behalf, really appreciate the fact that they've helped us on Grand Sky immensely. And that program wouldn't be where it's at today without those three gentlemen and Mr. Slossberg's legal ability has been wonderful to have and we're still using him, talking him tonight about our problems. So, thank you, gentlemen.
Well, thank you. Any other comments? If not, roll it, John.
The Air Force has a dream sheet and there are 20 spaces and I left the 20th space blank. And so then the guy said, well, put in Grand Forks, you'll never get it. So I filled in Grand Forks and then they sent me to Grand Forks as a volunteer.
Grand Forks is a small city in North Dakota and we've had a base here since 1955.
Back in the mid 50s, it was a question where the base was going to be located and the Grand Forks business community rose to the occasion and raised part of the money to actually purchase the land where Grand Forks Air Force Base sits today.
Most surprising to me is the history of the base. It's had pretty much every mission you could possibly have. Grand Forks has had that.
Well, you know, in our 60-plus year history, Grand Forks has had many, many missions. And over the years, we both had bombers and fighters, but it also became obviously more treasured as we went through five rounds of BRAC. And, and we lost several missions in that process.
Starting in 2010 with the, the last tanker leaving Grand Forks Air Force Base, you're, you're now looking at a, an Air Force unit that no longer has a flying mission. And, you know, Air Force is all about fly, fight, win.
We've been on every BRAC list. We've been affected by every BRAC, but we're still here.
And I think that is solely due to the community's support.
I think the biggest collaboration was really working with command staff to see what the needs were. And we actually had a lot of efforts that came out of that.
The enhanced use lease, the FAA waiver.
Whether it's schooling.
License reciprocity for trailing military spouses.
Key investments in initiative like Grand Sky.
The Grand Forks Division EDC, the Grand Forks County Leadership and Grand Fork City Leadership came together in that collaborative spirit.
Within the first month or so, I think I attended about three different meetings, whether it was the MAC or the BRIC or just folks coming on base to, to, to meet me and I was just taken aback about how interested they were in everything that impacts airmen's lives and, and our, our spouses, our dependents' lives.
So they, they fight to get the capability here and then once it's here, then they care for, care for us overall.
Grand Sky is a model for the base of the future. We're establishing on Grand Forks Air Force Base, a space and area dedicated to support both the government sector for UAS development and the private sector for UAS development, completely in tandem with airbase leadership.
Our enhanced use lease is over 200 acres that the Air Force has leased to the county. The companies that our developer has recruited really has synergy with our Global Hawk mission.
Grand Sky in general makes payments to the Air Force and those payments are retained at the Air Force Base.
Grand Forks Air Force Base is now the manager of all Global Hawk operations in the Air Force.
We are very proud to be the Global Hawk Air Force Base of the Air Force.
Grand Forks is definitely a Global Hawk base and a Global Hawk community 100%.
The difference with Grand Forks is they come to the base and they say, what issues are your airmen having? How can we help?
Don't be saying, don't close our base, please, but saying, this is everything our base has to offer. This is why it's valuable. Here's why we can support.
And so that outreach hand makes all the difference.
We have received the Abilene Trophy twice and the Abilene Trophy is what the Air Force gives to communities that have outstanding support for their Air Force Base and their men and women that serve.
All the people in Grand Forks really support our Air Force Base. It isn't one organization, it's all of the people, the community, all of the organizations working together.
Toward the same goal, that's when you become a force to be reckoned with.
The National Defense Strategy is ever evolving and we need to be in a position to support those changes as we look forward.
I think that, that every community that has an Air Force Base first and foremost needs to realize that it is a privilege to have an Air Force Base in your community and it's their responsibility to support the men and women at the Air Force in the interest of protecting our country.
When I was in Dover at the Air Force Base there, I was wearing my Global Hawk pin. On my way to the food line, I passed someone who said, you're from Grand Forks. On my way to the food line, I passed someone who said, you're from Grand Forks. I said, yes, I am, how did you know? He recognized the pin, and he said I was stationed there. And when I retire, I plan to move back there because the people are so nice.
participated in the video, and I want to thank the EDC for commissioning this, and I want to thank everyone for attending tonight. Have a good evening.
Thanks.[1689.83]